Call the meeting to order. It's our meeting for the possible meetings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
So anyone recording this move to the public and Mr. Arns will call this as your lawyer.
Mrs. Sorenza.
Here.
Mr. Hershey.
Here.
Mrs. Coon.
Here.
Mrs. McFoy.
Here.
Mrs. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Potager. Mr. Potager, I'm sorry. Mr. Retner.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Wechsler.
Here.
United attendants.
Thank you. Welcome, visitors. Our upcoming meetings, we have a committee of the whole meeting October 10th at 4:45 here in this room. We have a finance and budget workshop October 11th at 5:30 here. We have an executive session following this meeting to cover legal and personnel items. And we had an executive session on September 11, 2023 to cover legal items. We'll move on to student representative report. The student representatives are Vanessa Aguey and Leo Fletcher. Welcome. Is this the first time we've seen you, Leo?
Yep.
Well, welcome. We're a friendly group of people. All right.
Yeah, so we'll start off with clubs and activities. We have the junior senior high school held the annual club fair in early September. It was a great opportunity for students to learn about the many engaging clubs we have, the extracurriculars that, you know, we're updating and we're kind of keeping current, and to meet our student leaders of these groups who are all running their own tables. And we look forward to seeing our Spartans get involved in new activities this year. And we appreciate all of the club advisors for facilitating these opportunities and already having some first meetings with environmental club, Star Club, Quiz Bowl, all of that.
The Wyman Sing area drama club is hosting two events this fall. The annual fall thing will take place on October 21st, and the cast includes students in grades five to 12. On November 18th and 19th, the drama club will present the teen edition of Sixth musical, casting for the show to replace last week.
Student council is underway in planning Spirit Week for 2023, leading up to this year's homecoming on October 14th. And additionally, the student council also participated in opening day of 2023, where we welcomed our faculty and staff back to school and helped serve them breakfast and kind of meal them here before we started.
With athletics, our athletic teams are off to a great start this season. Chatted to our fall sports teams, some of whom are still undefeated this season.
In terms of academics, we have Spartans, Aliyah Contreras, Ari Patel, Rolando Ramos, Ramzan, and me, having earned recognition from the 2023 college board's national recognition program. This honor recognizes their academic achievement and hard work in high school.
Nine students at Wyman Sing area have earned the AP capstone diploma. The AP capstone diploma programs help students develop their critical thinking, research, collaboration, and presentation skills that are crucial to academic success. To receive the AP capstone diploma, students must earn scores of three or higher in AP seminar, AP research, and four additional AP exams of their choice. Congratulations to these students on this academic accomplishment.
Yeah, and I think that's all we have today. If there's any questions to, we can answer those.
You just had a question. Tell us a little bit about yourselves and what grade you're in and what you're involved with in school and out of school.
Well, my name's Vanessa. I'm in 12th grade. And what I'm involved in, I'm my class president. And I just like being involved in a lot of clubs because right now I'm kind of working to connect kind of the clubs and connect more collaboration because we're such a small school. And I think that it's great that we have so many, like, great leaders. But sometimes it's, you know, whether it's similar people leading these clubs, I think that it's important that we collaborate. And so kind of like with student council, working on like a website where the clubs can go on it and we can all see like a calendar with like when clubs are meeting. And so you can work out the overlap and conflict and be able to collaborate more. But I think that's primarily a focus. And then kind of outside of school, just working on U-Bridge or just like a nonprofit that I have for seven underrepresented kids and giving them exposure. So that's kind of the good thing.
Great.
I'm Leo. I'm also a senior. I've been working in a lot of clubs this year. I used to not be as involved and I realized that it is so better to try to learn with my community. I'm in student council, Vanessa's Star Club. And yeah, I'm just trying to learn as much as I can to better my future.
Great. And you got your Star Club approved. Good job on that. You had a good interest in people signing up?
Yes, we had a lot of interest. This is really close.
Terrific. And are you guys getting a little bit more sleep this year than last year? Just a little bit? Tell us, yeah, it's like 20 minutes.
Yeah, college applications are a little bit busier now, but yeah, definitely a bit more.
Well, thank you for being with us. Anybody have any questions for these families? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Liaison reports. Oh, you guys are welcome to leave or you can stay, but it gets a little boring, so.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming. Liaison reports. Berks County, Unit Board, and Mrs. Taylor.
Thank you. The board meets this Thursday, which is the day first. So I have no report as of now.
VCTC, Mr. Potager. Go on to the Berks EIT, Mr. Boyer.
We next meet on the 28th of September, so I also have no report.
Waze, Mrs. Coon.
Yep, we met today actually at noon in here, so I do have some updates. They had their cornhole tournament yesterday, which was successful. We have funded 14 classroom wishes since July 1st. So they are now trying to replenish that fund because there are nine other requests pending. But we need to wait till the fund has been replenished. We also have a new VCTC fund that's through Customers Bank. And they have already funded four requests this year, which is for like materials for students who are at VCTC. We also talked a little bit about Flannery Field since Jen Mangle and I were both there and mentioned that was a project that had come up. And probably administration all knows this, but there are, there was $10,000 in the Hampshire fund that is supposed to be used for, I believe it's the baseball dugouts. So they kind of talked about that and we're excited, I think, to hear that Flannery was coming up because they've had these funds for like three or four years and, you know, looking to let the Humpshires know that the fund will be used in the way that they have requested. They are also looking for an assistant treasurer who would also be a board member. So if anyone is interested or knows of anybody that has some accounting background, they would appreciate that. That's it.
Thank you very much.
PTA, Mrs. Phillips, oh, you're in.
She sent me her.
Thank you.
Notes.
Thank you.
Okay. PTA met September 13th. It was a very well attended meeting with a lot of new parents. It was wonderful to see all the new attendees. Well, I would like to thank all of our administration who continue to help the PTA by advertising all of the events on the district's social media platforms. They are still considering this year a rebuilding year for PTA, but are excited and hopeful for another successful year. PTA's first big event is happening next month, and that is the Walk with Wyom fundraiser. Students who attend WEP fundraising packets have been sent home. However, if you no longer have a child at WEP, please keep an eye out on social media for students who will be participating in the walk. All donations benefit Wyman Sing area school districts. The walk is scheduled for Friday, October 6th. PTA still is in need of some sponsors for the walk. And if anyone is able to be a sponsor, please reach out to Carolyn Handy or Mrs. Phillips. The next meeting is scheduled for November 8th at 7:00 PM. Location is still being determined, but they're looking to have it at the Wyman Sing Hills Elementary Center cafeteria.
Thank you. Thanks, Mrs. Phillips, and Mrs. Taylor.
Mrs. Rant.
Yes.
Steve texted me that there is no meeting. Next meeting is September 27th.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Potager. Mr. Potager says there's no meeting. There was no meeting next meeting September 27th for the.
VCTC.
VCTC. Moving on to public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board? Routine approvals, treasurers' report, and payment of bills. It is recommended that the board of school directors approve the following. August 28, 2023, board of school directors meeting minutes. Treasurers' report for the month of August 2023. Payment of bills for the month of August 2023 as listed in the financial packet. Do I have a motion?
So.
A second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to say one thing because I've been doing this for a long time. And Mark, I was looking at all the bills today and I see some really big ones and I see some small ones as far as like tuitions and stuff like that. It might be helpful moving forward for new board members to put in if this is a one-time fee or a monthly fee. Like some of those cyber school tuitions and that kind of stuff. It'd be interesting to know, like, and I can look every month. You know, but just to go, oh, is this a monthly fee? Or like I saw something for Wilson School District and it was a pretty big number. And I thought that has to be an annual fee. So it just might be helpful moving forward for that information. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we can do this by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Question passed us. Superintendents report, Mr. Scolari.
Thank you. We're entering the fourth week of school. Last week was our first five-day week, but the two kind of shortened weeks. And, you know, from a general sense, everything is going very well. It was a good opening. The first couple of weeks, sometimes there's some sorting out between buses and students and schedules. And really now, most of that has been taken care of and, you know, our staff is working hard. Our students are kind of getting into the school routines. And hopefully, parents are finding all the resources and the services they need. Just a couple of quick items I wanted to highlight. We had a chance to welcome our new West Reading police chief. That's Chief Richard Tornelli. Has a lot of experience. He met, I wasn't expecting him to want to meet with us so soon. He just started his job about a week ago. He made us the priority and he met with all of us. Dr. Bad, myself, Mr. Kathleen Selly, and Officer Brenly. He took a tour of the West Reading building and then sat down and spent a lot of time with us looking at some of the current initiatives and past initiatives. He's eager to join our Safe Schools Committee. That's a group of community and staff and police experts. And they'll be meeting later on in October, so he's eager to join that group. He got right to work because he also looked like he was doing a nice job over at the Fall Fest. On Saturday, it was a big event there in West Reading and I got to see Chief and his West Reading staff. So really great to have him join kind of our community, our district community. And then Vanessa did leave, but I just want to give a shout out to our interns. Had a chance to sit down with our interns, Mr. Arns and Ms. Tierney, who kind of coordinate their work. And this group will be out and about, not just here in the building. They also go to our two elementary schools. They go out and cover some community events, sporting events, when they have time around their busy schedules. We did give them IDs this year. They don't get a fob on the back, but they're identifiable. So if people see them out in the building, they know that they're, you know, covering an event. And give a shout out to Vanessa Aguey, Ashley Baker, Layal Deal, Christopher Greeley, and Sullivan Wengrowski. So, you know, a lot of time and a lot of talent that they contribute to make sure that these great Facebook posts that you're seeing or articles that come up in newsletters, they do a lot of that work. Mr. Arns has helped them do a lot of the creativity side as well. They can stage the items and then Ms. Tierney can give a final approval. So they're really kind of digging in and a lot of things you see, they're doing key parts of that. So we're glad to have them. You've heard a lot over the last year or more with the Mental Health Action Plan. And I know Dr. Langle will be a regular visitor. Probably every month or two, we'll be coming back to give you some updates, talk about some of those pieces. If you recall, there was, I think, seven or eight pages of items that we want to implement over the coming years. And so instead of all at once, Dr. Langle's coming periodically to give us some updates and talk about some exciting new programs that we have to support our students. So turn it over to Dr. Langle.
Thank you, Mr. Scolari. I have two relatively quick items tonight, but by being quick doesn't mean that they're not actually very exciting for us. Both are pilot options for us. The first is related to the PAES survey. So that's the PA Youth Survey. If you recall, this will be our third year doing it and it is conducted in grades six, eight, 10, and 12. You conduct the survey in the fall and then the results come out in the spring. It's usually late spring, around May. And we get about 100 pages of data that comes out of this survey. We can compare Wyman Sing area school district data to Berks County data as well as to the state data. So when our, when our mental health task force first came together, this was actually the first document that we looked at to kind of break apart some of the data. There were about 30 of us in this room and we spent a good probably two hours just trying to go through some of that data in different groups. So it's been valuable to us. Each year, we do an executive summary that sort of outlines those 100 pages of data for our community, our staff, to be able to look at, you know, what results came out, came from that. This year, we have an option to pilot it in fourth grade. Last year, the state began piloting it in fourth grade with only a handful of districts. I think it was about 15. This year, they're opening it up to many more. In front of you, you have a packet in its three pages, front and back, that show what the fourth grade survey questions actually look like. This is the entire dictionary of questions that they have available to students. It doesn't mean our students will see all of these questions, though. For any of you that are familiar with the PAES survey, some of the questions are pretty intense. The fourth grade questions are not that. They are written solely for fourth graders. So whereas our sixth grade, eighth grade, 10th, and 12th graders may see some pretty significant questions related to things like drug and alcohol use, our fourth graders will not be seeing that. But it touches on all the major areas where we can look to see what additional supports and services we might need to be providing to better support our students. The other big thing with the fourth grade pilot is the fourth grade teachers would actually be reading the entire survey to the students. So it removes the element of students being able to read and comprehend appropriately. The only other real big part of it is it is only being offered in an electronic format. So we would have our students with their iPads in front of them as the teacher is reading and the student is following along and then clicking their answer. The opportunity for families to opt their child out of this will exist just like it does in the older grades. And they think that this survey, they're anticipating it taking around 10 minutes, from reading the directions aloud to reading every question the child's getting aloud to reading the final passage that tells the students. None of their data is identifiable. It's not attached to a student name. It's not attached to a birth date. It's only attached simply to their grade. Any questions or concerns about what I just shared with the fourth grade pilot? Spoken with Dr. Redken. He seems pretty excited about it. The real plus for us will be that in two years, we will have that cohort that we're looking at. So this survey happens every two years. So this same group of students then would be assessed in sixth grade and we would be able to see how that data compares.
How do you pick which questions you ask?
We don't, they do. So because it's a pilot, the number of the questions that we will get will be similar to what the others in our county get, but not necessarily outside of our county. They're trying to make sure that they have, because it's voluntary to pilot it, they're trying to make sure that they have enough districts within each county that they're choosing. They did choose us. We still can opt out of it if we were to desire to do that, but we were one of the Berks County schools that was chosen.
And you said the teachers read the question?
Mm-hmm, just in fourth grade.
So how does a teacher read a question that says, my family insults or yells at each other?
So I don't believe.
Without like the kids kind of getting engaged and saying, yeah, that happens in my, you know what I mean? How do you keep the kids quiet that they're?
So the, what you're seeing in front of you is not the verbatim question of what is on the child's iPad and what the teacher would be reading. And our teachers would also have the option to project. I forgot to share that. So each question can also be projected up on the mainstream. So how it's actually phrased isn't exactly what you're seeing here.
It'd be more like, hey, sometimes people don't always get along.
Yes, there's actually, yeah, exactly. Mrs. Wechsler, there are introductory statements that go along with some of these. But that does not exist for the older grades. Okay, so I'll move on to my next pilot option, which is the Karen Foundation. You all know the Karen Foundation as having their main campus in, in the corner, though? Yes. They have an outpatient treatment facility here in Wyman Sing. It's over near the Inn at Reading, sort of catty corner from the Inn at Reading. And they are seeing a definite increase in the number of youth that are utilizing drugs and alcohol. So they have seen a lot more students accessing that site for outpatient treatment. These could be students who are stepping down from a residential treatment facility or these could be students who perhaps have tried something and admitted it. Families who want additional support for their students. It could also be students who have families who are struggling with drug and alcohol use and there are groups for those students. What they are looking to do because of a need is to bring some of that into the schools. And I'll explain why and what that will look like. So the rationale behind it is they are seeing a spike in students, one who have a transportation barrier. So they're not able to get their after-school. Parents are working or parents don't have adequate transportation and can't get them to their treatment. The other thing that they're seeing is a rise in students who are heavily involved in school. So for Johnny to give up going to football practice, as an example, he doesn't want to do that. Well, he somehow needs to be getting that drug and alcohol treatment. So what they're looking to do is partner with their Karen personnel who are already in schools to provide a virtual outpatient group therapy session. It will cost districts nothing. They are opening it up to all Berks County schools as an option. What we would be looking at is utilizing our Karen specialist, who is here already, in the room that she's already using. So we don't have to find new space because that's always a problem for us, to actually be the facilitator. So she would be here. She would have Wyom Sing students, if in fact there are any and their families have consented. But also other students across the county could be virtually participating in that session. What it does for us is, one, it gives someone to sort of handhold some of our kiddos to get them to those sessions. So somebody who can actually go to period three and make sure that that pass is there for Johnny to come. The other thing it does is it doesn't require us to find personnel to support finding the room, getting the kids there, making sure that they're participating. So in other districts that are looking to support this pilot but don't have Karen treatment facility personnel there, they would be pulling maybe a school counselor or a social worker or somebody else to come in and oversee that outpatient therapy group that would be running virtually. It would be no more than one, one time per week and they would rotate it so that students are not missing the same class period every time. Our, our current Karen personnel who is here is the person who would do it. She would not be doing it on her time that she's already paid to be here. It would be additional time that she would be coming in and running these groups. This is not a definite done deal. The next steps, I just wanted to bring it to you to make sure that you were aware of it as a possible opportunity. Karen is developing an MOU to utilize with any of the school districts. So if we were to move forward with this, I'd be coming back in front of you again with whatever the MOU would look like to outline it even further as to what would be happening. But really exciting if it's going to get some of our students who may be struggling with drug and alcohol use a place close. They don't have to rely on mom and dad. They don't have to miss out on after-school activities. And it can be a trusted face. So our SAP professional who is here, her name is Jess Case. She's, you would not know that she's not a Wyman Sing employee. She's here so frequently, knows so many of our students. So it would allow those students to be entering that setting for therapy with somebody that they know. Questions about that?
Yeah, so the, so let's say it's period three that this happens. So the students come to her room.
So is she her?
With her or is that the virtual part? I'm confused on what's the virtual part.
But she would be there helping to facilitate it with other Karen therapists who are actually facilitating the group. But what we would have is a Karen professional present as opposed to having our school counselor or our social worker present.
Making sure students.
Facilitating.
You're there.
Yep.
Okay, gotcha.
Parent permission is still required. Nothing gets lost there. The only thing these students would have to go to the Karen physical Brick and Mortar building for would be their initial assessment. After that, they could have everything done during their school day.
Is this an open group or a closed group? Like, does it go on for infinity? Or is it like certain number of sessions?
It's the same way as if they were receiving drug and alcohol counseling in a one-on-one or another group setting, whereas they would be evaluated early on and then would be discharged just as you would from any type of therapy setting. That's another thing I forgot to mention. It does go through the student's insurance, so there's nothing. And Karen takes care of setting all of that up.
And if they don't have insurance?
Karen, I assume, would work with them on medical assistance or something else. None of that would come back to us other than certainly we work very collaborative, collaboratively with Karen. So perhaps they would contact our social worker to get involved to also help the family, but none of it financially would come back on us.
And will there be practices and procedures in place to protect anonymity and confidentiality? I can just imagine it being kind of tough if you show up in the room with three other people and then you go tell your friends who was in that room with you.
That was actually my concern. And it didn't dawn on me that this is the same type of group that they run there. So the students do sign a confidentiality agreement, but it's no different than if three of our students were going to the Brick and Mortar Karen site at 6:00 PM.
And do the kids generally know what this room, going to this room means? Like, or is there a way to sneak there? You know what I mean, to keep, to preserve what you're doing?
Yeah, I think the, so she uses a conference room up at the junior senior high school. And I think that that room is used for so many things that it would be hard to know. She also typically uses a room that's within the administrative kind of wing there. So it's not an area where students are frequently passing by and looking in windows or anything. So if there's no further questions, next step should be, if in fact Karen has an open house next week to kind of meet some of the staff and talk a little bit more about what districts think, any hiccups districts might have. And then again, if, if we move forward, I'd be coming back to it with some type of MOU that would just outline exactly what it'll look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Langle. I know that, that report again is very lengthy and I believe, we're hoping tentatively maybe for November, excuse me, maybe October, the second meeting, that Dr. Langle would maybe go through that report again in a summarized format, but just give some updates and maybe, you know, add a column just to give a little progress report on some of those areas. Will it be this year? Will some of them be multi-year, you know, areas? So we are looking to do a more comprehensive update later this fall. Thank you, Dr. Langle.
Oh, may I ask one thing sort of related to mental health while we're on the topic? The kindness campaign signs, that's still ongoing, right? And is there like a deadline for that or?
I think just until we sell out. The library personnel that I worked with, you know, she already sort of has it on her radar if we were to do this annually and maybe change some of the phrases that are on there. We have had a lot of people reach out with things they'd like to see them say. So I guess just until we sell out and then if we decide to redo it.
And would you mind just re-sending that form to the board?
Sure.
And then just, I would encourage the board members to consider finding a sign or two and putting them on their yards if they'd be willing to do that.
I will say, as a community member with no children in the district, I've never seen it advertised. And I had someone call me and ask me if we had someone commit suicide and is that why the signs are up? So somehow we have to send a message as to why they're there in a positive way that not, where it's a preventative measure. It's, you know what I mean?
But just an FYI, like, if you're not in tune with what's happening in the school, you don't know why those signs are up. So, unfortunately.
So we did try to use social media, but again, you may not be checking those, even though they're public access. You might not be checking those if you don't have a child.
I mean, I see the school stuff come through, but, you know, that's why I would say, like, what is it, 20% of our families have kids in the district, 80% of the people don't know why those signs are there. And I haven't seen it on the library site either, because I think I get their weekly email.
It definitely went out with the library, the library is selling them like crazy.
I mean, it could be because I get 40 emails, you know what I mean? And there's only so much you can keep up with, but there was that question, and I thought, oh, that's really disappointing that that's why they thought the signs were there.
Could we, or did we do like a press release? Because that could get...
We could, we could see if the Red Eagle would cover it. Let's check first on how many signs are left, because I don't know if they're going to do a second order or not, we'd have to just figure that out. I know we did our social media in hopes that that gets a little deeper than just our parent, you know, our current parents, but, you know, let's check on the numbers, and then we'll kind of see if we can do another wave of promotion.
If you would let us know what the numbers are, that would be really helpful, because I was going to put some flyers through my neighbors' boxes, but I don't want to do that if there's not a supply, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We definitely have signs left, it's just if we don't have all, like, some of the wording are lower.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that campaign too, Dr. Lengel, for helping with that, that's true.
Thank you.
So the next section is finance and facilities, and some of these items stem from, you know, previous meetings. You can see the track in court that Mrs. Kuhn mentioned in her report, that was from the meeting on the 11th that the board did review. And then there's some, you know, kind of standard items. Another donation for opening day, we had several donors, so we thank Kelly Education for that. And then you see some annual items that we have each year with our transportation services as well. So it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve and ratify the following finance and facility items, and that's numbers one through eight.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
When we spoke about the Flannery Field thing last week, there was some information that was requested by different board members. Do we have that information back?
I think everything that I was asked was in the Friday update. So I put some items in the Friday update that I think were the questions. I think I was asked, you know, the numbers of students that participated in the different programs, I broke that out. I believe I was asked the length of the sports seasons, that's all in there. And then we also listed the community events. So I think everything that I was asked, but if you feel, if you review it and you feel there's another question, don't hesitate. But certainly this will be, depending on what the board chooses to do, there'll be several meetings to, you know, work through this information. So if I didn't capture something that you wanted in the Friday update, just let me know. And we could certainly make those part of a, you know, future public report as well. But if I missed anything, please let me know.
I apologize, it's not, I don't see it in my Friday update. I think they were attached.
Thanks. It's on page two of it, here's the list of...
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I totally missed that. I apologize.
Sure.
Some of that did come, I just wanted to add to at the WEF meeting, there were several parents concerned about the parking over there again, and I said, yes, we're, you know, they said, "Is the board aware of that?" And I said, "Yes, we're aware that there are parking issues over there." But there are some parents who are, you know, frustrated with the parking situation with the buses and the vans, and there's just nowhere to go. So that was expressed, and so I think they were happy to hear we were at least discussing it.
Mrs. Taylor, would you like more of an opportunity to review all that?
No, that's fine, I just...
Because it's certainly okay if you...
No, I'm okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Can we make that a separate item? For vote, please?
Yes. Okay, so then somebody help me out with the meeting. So we amend the motion?
We have a motion, a second?
We would ask whoever made the first motion if you're willing to... Do we just do one motion? So we're...
So this would be numbers two through eight if there's a friendly amendment to those who accepted the motion and seconded it? I think that took place earlier.
Yeah, we're not taking that one, yeah.
So this would be numbers... Are we first okay with quoting separately? Is there...
Yes.
Maybe by voice quote, or? So then if we want, we could change this amendment that's, the motion that's on the table to numbers two through eight?
So, or, yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah. We need to...
Motion and all that?
It would be up to Mrs. Waxler.
Okay.
If they're okay with that.
So then, so the motion would be, we're voting on approving numbers two, three. Roll call Mr. Board.
Mrs. Herentze.
Yes.
Mr. Hershey.
Yes.
Mrs. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Potiger.
Yes.
Mr. Retner.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Waxler.
Yes.
Motion passes nine, zero.
So then the next motion would be, it's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve and ratify number one. Do I have a motion for that? So, wait, second by Mrs. Kuhn. Any discussion on item number one?
I just, even after reviewing the information, I'm not comfortable moving forward at this point. I think we still need to wait and see how everything lands with the hills. That project is still underway. As far as the scope of the improvement study, there's a lot of different pieces in that, and I don't know if we would all agree that we're not going to winterize the field house. Does that change the cost of the improvement study? Or are we just doing, paying the $9,000, and if we choose not to do something, we choose not to do something? So, that's it, that's my comment.
Just to answer, I know Mr. Cavincelli's here, so our understanding is the, you know, the $8,925 is a comprehensive look at the items, you know, some of those were looked at before, so he does have, the firm has some preliminary information that'll make that review a little bit quicker. But this would allow all the items in that whole field complex that need addressing, and then the board in a sense would have a somewhat of choices and information, and then the board could discuss it, choose to hear more, choose not to hear more about any or all or none. But my understanding is that that covers everything up there on the property that potentially could need to be addressed.
That is correct. And drawings, any collaboration with the Borough Conservation District, that would all include his piece.
And then if we were to proceed to bid it, we would bid it in pieces, we could bid it in pieces so that we could make choices about all our parts of the project.
Absolutely.
And we are agreeing that this process won't, that part of the process really wouldn't happen until we have our new board members, so that we're not binding new board members to these type of financial decisions.
Correct.
Great, any other discussion? Roll call Mr. Board.
Mr. Hershey.
Yes.
Mrs. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Potiger.
Yes.
Mr. Retner.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
No.
Mrs. Waxler.
Yes.
Mrs. Herentze.
Yes.
Motion passes eight.
Thank you.
The next section is personnel and policy, and generally, most of this is pretty routine. There's some things we do each year, there's things you see each month. I do want to say thank you to Dr. Woodard. I know our principals assisted, and we had a team, so we do have two more professional hires here, I believe, Dr. Woodard. That makes us, you know, complete at the current moment. Certainly we don't control the future, but it was, we had a couple resignations towards the end of the summer that we needed to fill. So thank you to everybody on the teams for getting all of these employees in front of us, or potential employees in front of us. I did have a request from a board member, we're going to request them to two chunks. So the first one is, it's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve and ratify the following personnel and policy items as presented, and that's numbers one through seven. So that's not the volunteer list, but everything else, numbers one through seven.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second? Second. Is there any discussion? Roll call Mr. Board.
Mrs. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Potiger.
Yes.
Mr. Retner.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Waxler.
Yes.
Mrs. Herentze.
Yes.
Mr. Hershey.
Yes.
Motion passes nine, zero.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve and ratify following personnel and policy item, and that is number eight, volunteer list.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? No, I know, I just was thinking that if someone has a problem with the volunteer list, I wish I-
That's because her husband's on the list.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. No worries, I just wanted to, I wish you would, somebody would charge, sorry.
I'll be out on the layer, hi, okay, thank you. Yeah, all right, thank you very much. All right, then we have a motion?
And a second?
Yes.
And we have discussion, and there wasn't discussion, so roll call Mr. Board.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Potiger.
Yes.
Mr. Retner.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Waxler.
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Herentze.
Yes.
Mr. Hershey.
Interesting.
You know, Sam.
He should still...
Say, you know, we took them right off.
Mrs. Phillips.
That was a great one, right? We, we, we-
Do you want to change, amend the vote to a second?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Hey, can't you vote?
It was advised that I shouldn't, by our solicitor.
Is that the only one I'm gonna have?
No.
It's a, it's a full list, but, you know, that was the advice as to-
I'm sorry, I thought, that was the one through seven, so.
So, I'm, everyone comfortable changing your vote to a second?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that is my-
Mrs. Kuhn.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes eight, zero, and one extension.
Thank you. Sorry, confused everyone.
My apologies, thank you.
Thank you. Next would be old business. We're moving on to West Reading Crossing Guards. Mrs. Taylor, you ready to do this?
Yes, thank you.
May I interrupt you? I'm sorry, everyone, I need to leave for another committee, so Mrs. Taylor and I are going to switch spots, and she's going to finish up.
Okay. I'm the one, I'm the one who can-
Do this part of it.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we've discussed the crossing guards several times during my tenure on the board, and basically what it comes down to is every municipality in the county funds part or all of school crossing guards salaries, with the exception of West Reading Borough. They have not paid since the 13, 14-
15, 16.
15, 16, thank you, school year. So I attended in an unofficial capacity the traffic and infrastructure meeting at West Reading Borough Hall last week and spoke about my concern for the lack of crossing guards on the north side of the borough. So if you're coming from Wyomissing into West Reading, everything on the left side, there's maybe three crossing guards over there, and students in some neighborhoods have to cross intersections that are not four-way stops or have a four-way traffic control device. So rather than get into the who should and shouldn't pay and all that other stuff, my suggestion was to have our on-duty police officer at least at the corner of Fourth and Penn Avenues, not our school district, I'm sorry, the boroughs, on-duty police officer. They can monitor, making sure the kids get across the street safely, they can monitor people who don't abide by the "walk, don't walk" signs, and they can also just keep an eye down the street as those students need to walk past a residence of a not-so-credible individual on the way to school. Another community member expressed similar concerns regarding Sixth and Reading Avenues, but basically just that the borough is going to look into having an officer present at Fourth and 10, so that if we can get the students there, they can cross Penn Avenue without having to walk an extra block and a half in each direction to get to and come to school, and crossing dangerous intersections. So more to come. Chief Pernelli seemed to feel that was something they could do, wouldn't cost anybody any extra money, and it's 15 minutes in the morning and 15 minutes in the afternoon, so hopefully we can get some presence there. All right. Any right-to-know, oh, I'm sorry, any new business? Any right-to-know requests? I don't think we have any. Any updates from organizations? Okay. Then I would ask to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And, please, I'm sorry, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, we adjourned.